You were last.
Okay.
Should we all rise? All rise. Tell what is it?
Sorry.
Did you say?
Three days.
Okay.
Wait, yes. We're going back into open session and I think we'll forego what we did this morning. So, we will go right into the senior tax freeze discussion, application, whatever.
You want me to jump right into the noary thing, LV, or did you have an order that you wanted to?
No, I don't have an agenda.
Anybody else have a preference?
No, I think you ought to probably accomplish that first so we get it out of the way.
So, I don't think there was a question as to whether we wanted to amend our ordinance under the application, section three, letter C, if we would just eliminate that set application. Shall I have a signature for me to the truth of the matters represented in said application? Does anybody got anything to add about that?
I think we were all in agreement with that.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we amend it to remove section three subsection C and not require the signature. You're gonna have to second.
I have to second.
Right, because you don't have to.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. And he's a time breaker today, too. Still don't like that.
I'm. Okay.
So, going one thing on that was that Harry mentioned still having the signature line, witness signature line, so I don't know where I stood on that. It doesn't really matter to me, but.
Well, there's actually a place for two signatures on the back, so we could easily change it from that one instead of applicant signature to witness signature and witness name printed.
I just want to bring up, I don't think we need it personally, but my vote on is we don't need it.
Yeah, Harry said.
My vote is we don't need it either.
Okay.
He wasn't gonna stand up and fight for it either way, and I did ask the prosecutor attorney for some kind of an opinion and never heard back, so.
We got rid of signatures on marriage license applications like thirty years ago. They just, it's not required any further statutorily because it didn't matter. They're signing.
Does that mean you're not really married? You don't have to sign?
Well, you have to sign it. Witnesses don't have to.
Oh.
Oh, we should.
Nice try.
You're married, too.
Well, you're not gonna get married again.
Again?
Give me, when we send you a plant.
I wasn't gonna go there. This wasn't being recorded.
When we send you a plant.
Yeah, so, okay, so I don't think it sounds like we're worried about having the signature witness line on there.
And on the second signature, if someone is signing as the attorney in fact, do you think it needs to have that under there, like by attorney in fact? We have to when we do deeds, so I didn't know if you thought they should be on here.
That's what I was thinking. It needed to say like personal representative signing for applicant or something.
P O A, power of attorney.
At least have something, because like especially if we decide to do the online.
I don't care what we call it, just tell me what you want me to put there.
Should we put an offer them to check and it says gives them options of P O A or do you?
I don't even know what, how many options there are for that particular thing. I would just have it some, simple, like I am personal representative for the applicant or something like that.
By personal representative or by attorney in fact, those are the ways we have it.
Yeah, and maybe you could.
So, you do have that on a documentary that we could use to refer to?
Would you send me that wording?
Yeah, I mean, we have a different way, so it's really whatever your preference is on that. It says by power of attorney, by personal representative, by attorney in fact, and they sign it.
You have all three on there? Or you just take three different ones?
Different attorneys send in different verbiage, so it's just choose probably what you prefer.
I don't have a preference. You just send me one that you think works best for all circumstances and that's what I'll put on there.
It probably needs to say, I am attaching docu. I am attaching documentation to prove that, or I don't know how to describe it, like I am going to attach documentation to prove that I have power of attorney or whatever. I'd have to, I don't know how to say that.
I am a personal representative per attached documents.
Yeah.
I know during B O E we have that extra form that you're authorized such and such person to act on my behalf. They have that during B O E, too.
Yeah, I was just trying to keep it as simple as possible.
Could you just keep a similar signature or representative and the representative could be your attorney, it could be, everything we can send, I trust, so I find Sam a little bit trust, but.
We could send you a couple of different copies if you want.
Okay. We'll pin them up on the wall and throw darts and choose which one it hits.
A lot of people are gonna have it, but you are gonna have some.
Sam, could you come down and hold that for us while we throw darts?
He's already gonna be testing the old A D Bs from now on.
Oh.
How weird.
It's coming back to haunt you.
Yeah, they came out through that.
They did have a situation over in the hallway. Someone was standing at your window signing a check and he just dropped.
He just, yeah.
That was scary.
It was scary.
Taxes were too high.
That was actually a claims rep for an insurance company that was coming to get a copy of somebody's that they'd paid their taxes.
Wow.
He just went.
And it was so loud, it really chilled down my spine.
Hit his head on that marble floor, tile floor. He was bleeding like a stuck pig.
He was.
So, let me make one comment. So, last week I talked to Larry, I said, I can volunteer my three deputies to review the applications as well. I don't know how many, but do we know once they approve or disapprove the application, are they signing that part down below?
Well.
Or is that too premature?
It's a little, still a little premature.
Okay.
That may come up in the discussion today.
Yeah.
It's gonna be kind of the procedure part of it.
Yeah, all I'm saying is, I would like to help with this. It may not be a whole lot, but even if each of my three deputies could review five apps a day, that's fifteen a day, seventy-five a week, three hundred a month, so we can help a little bit.
Yeah, everybody thinks throwing their head in to help with this, so we do appreciate that.
Now, I don't, I don't know if we can, from a safety standpoint, have people from the public come down to our limited public window.
I think we're gonna have someplace that it's going to be brought to. We haven't exactly decided that yet either.
And Larry, you were talking about maybe using the commission chambers for a group of people to help.
To get the applications processed, filled out, help with that. Then, then, I think then we could divvy up the applications to review them and approve them.
Right. And I can come up and get a stack or one of my deputies can and you can give them a stack, right?
Well, yeah, we'll need to figure a way to divide them and also to record them first so we know if you've got fifty applications, who those fifty are, so if somebody calls and to have a question or something. And hopefully, some of the, some of the things that Brian and Melissa are gonna talk about will help in that process.
Anything else on the application that we need to address?
I don't think there were any other changes that, I mean, we discussed some, some things about owner of record, but I personally, I think that's okay.
Yeah, we caved. Yeah, Larry talked to us, we caved. The only issue that I was saying about that where it says, you're probably gonna have people coming in for deeds, and statutorily, we can't do a title search, and the way we find the latest deed, if it's correct, we look, we look the address up on the assessor's website, we use their software, then we look in ours. It gives us a time period because sometimes they're not updated yet, or sometimes they'll have it inverted, so we still have to check our system, but it gives us a timeframe. So, we help, it's just a little gray area for us. Yes, we have the deeds, but we don't do title search, we're not allowed to by statute. So, what it says, you know, as recorded, it's really as recorded in the assessor's file, he tells you who owns it, and then they come over to us and print it, but we caved, so you wanna leave it, that's fine.
You might have to arm wrestler on that also, Jeff.
I have one more.
We caved on scanning initially.
Yep.
So, we decided to call it senior tax freeze. Is that gonna be confusing to have the form not say senior, the application not say senior tax freeze and everything else does?
No, I, you're right, I can change it.
Okay.
I'm just lazy and got to.
It's a lot shorter to say than, Cole County Senior Real Estate Property Tax Free. Recognizing you have problems with the first step to recovery.
Should we put on there somewhere that if they download the form, that they can put it in our Dropbox? I mean, I don't know.
I was wondering about that. I think that would be a good.
I think that needs to go on the web, our webpage, that's one of the highlights on our webpage, yeah, how to submit it, yeah.
Does anybody use a Dropbox when they pay their taxes?
Oh, a ton.
They do? I'm glad.
They use it.
I've used it.
I think a lot of people are gonna wanna come in, they're gonna wanna, they're gonna wanna fill it out right here in front of somebody, but you will get some that probably will be comfortable.
Yeah, I'd say we get several thousand payments through the Dropbox, yeah.
But I didn't, most people I talk to, they wanna come.
Why would they wanna come and sit in front of somebody to fill it out? I mean, fill that up on their.
They want you to tell them what to write.
I mean, that's why we made it as simple as we could, so they could just.
I don't know, we get asked that every day, but we can't help them write it, so they want you to tell them what to write.
Yes, but, okay. All right, so we're gonna change the name at the top of it as well.
Cole County Senior Real Estate Property Tax Freeze are just so Cole County Senior Tax Freeze.
Real estates, they don't think it's personal property.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
So, what's it gonna be?
Cole County Senior Real Estate Property Tax Freeze Program instead of tax relief.
We need to do that on top of Q and A, too, if we do that sheet. The one that we matched then. Okay, so, I'm gonna start with the application, we got anything else on there? Uh, the application due date?
Well, originally, it said it had to be by June thirtieth, but since 2026 is the first year a credit could be had, it could be June thirtieth, 2026.
That's where I was leaning, so.
That's what I told Ben yesterday. He wants to do it now, but I said, hopefully we'll have it done by the end of April, but I said, you know, it won't go into effect till next year, so you can actually wait until 2026. They're all gonna wanna come and do that.
They, yeah, they need to, they need to understand that the freeze is for what you pay in 2025.
That's what I've been telling.
The first credit you could get though is in 2026, so.
How do you do those quarterly payments? Do people, will they come in in March if they're on the quarterly?
Yeah. But that would be, that would be calculated on their final payment.
Okay.
Because the final bill is always the remainder left once the tax bills have been created, and they don't get created till November, so.
So, it will all still be ready for the March?
And of course, once they get it the first year, that's, credit would be part of how their credit is calculated, or how their tax bill's calculated the next year for quarterly payments. The credit would be included in that, so they're, they're always gonna be a month, well, they're always gonna get the credit in the correct year, they're just not gonna get it ahead of time when they're paying their quarterly payment.
It'll catch up?
It will catch up by the last quarter.
Okay.
So, you'll probably need like at least thirty days before the actual deadline, deadline of whatever, you said June first or June thirtieth?
June thirtieth.
To be able to process whoever turns, you couldn't take them up until June thirtieth and then still have time to process them?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Tax, I mean, we, we don't generate tax bills until October, so, but we start the, that whole process, and really the reason for it to, I think, end at June thirtieth is that's because when the assessor's turns over his books.
So, June thirtieth, twenty-sixth, 2026?
Yes.
And what's the starting, what's the starting date of taking them?
As soon as we get it ready to go, sometime next month, hopefully.
April?
Yeah, we were.
I think the more time we have, the better, especially this first year.
We'll have a bunch right at the beginning, because, yeah, which is good.
I was looking at Steve's estimate of how many sixty-two and older we have, and then he, his was sixteen thousand seven thirty-seven from the voter record registration. So, I went on census.gov and looked at their census stats, they only do sixty-five and older, but that number is fourteen thousand five hundred and sixteen-ish, so that's the estimate of how many sixty-five and older, so.
But again, you have some who aren't property owners, they're living in an apartment.
Yeah.
Are you have husband and wife?
They're in a retirement home, so it's still gonna be a little smaller.
Yeah, so, just.
So, it said the population is seventy-seven thousand, sixty-five and older is eighteen point seven percent, so we have thirty-three thousand six hundred and sixty-four housing units, owner occupied sixty-seven point four percent, so thirty-three thousand and change times sixty-seven percent, twenty-two thousand six hundred and eighty-nine, and I used twenty percent of sixty-five and older, which was eighteen point seven, so I just rounded up to twenty, which may get us to the sixty-two. Brings us to forty-five thirty-seven of the people that are sixty-two and older, owner occupied, which it could mean that you have two of them in the same house or just one, and then what percentage of them actually apply? I don't remember what it was in Boone County, but it's.
I don't either. I think they had about five thousand.
It should be well underneath of what Boone County's is.
Yeah.
So, if we, I don't, that's just some numbers. I did kinda like you, Melissa, through, it was swag, but I actually used numbers off of the last census.
Yeah. I would imagine most people are gonna apply for it, like who doesn't want their taxes to go down?
I don't know, I've had some mixed responses about it. Some of them are like, it's not that much, and the other ones are like, it's not that much, but government takes too much of my money, so I wanna save my money. So, it'd be interesting.
Well, I think when we talk about people that say it's not that much, if they don't apply, when they turn sixty-two, or the, after the first of the year that they turn sixty-two, for instance, this 2025 being the base year, you know, if I waited till 2028 to apply, then 2028's gonna be my base year, not 2025. So, they're, even if they, I mean, they're gonna miss out on, even though it's gonna be small, the first few times around, it will eventually add up to something.
It may not be, if the state tax commission gets their way.
Well, that's true. That's true. You're right.
Let's not even get into that one, I'm sorry.
Yes, my man was ninety-two years old, so he wanted to know when he could, he could apply. So, I explained all this, and I said, you're really not gonna notice a big difference, at least for the first five years, I said, but ten years from now, that's when you will really see the difference. He said, ten, I'm ninety-two. Yeah, so I said, you'll notice it in ten years. There's a lot of, well.
So, the base year is a time of application.
Hundred and one.
So, but these seem like pretty sharp.
All right, so I'll page it, huh?
I believe so.
So, so let me ask, just to be clear, so what you're saying, and I'm asking from a senior taxpayer perspective, so year over year, it's not that significant of a savings, but cumulative it is, however, based on what Jeff just said and what Harry talked about last week, that may be marginalized if everybody's rates are gonna go up, correct?
Could be. You could shoot ours up, and then by the time I'm sixty-two, it's already up there, and maybe there's a decline, and you know, they're not gonna.
Yeah, but even at that, if I qualified for this, am I not protected from that?
As long as you apply every year.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Hey, if you skip it one year, then your base year starts over.
It depends on, it depends on when Cole County meets that standard that the state tax commission has set. If that's done yet this year, then everybody's gonna be at that higher rate. But, and there, there's competing legislation in the House right now. I think there's also some legislation that's limits increases in assessed value by no more than two percent a year. So, I don't know how those two are actually competing legislation. It's.
I don't know.
It's a mess, yeah.
Because Jackson County has got a mess right now, and that's what they did, is they went and tried to comply with the state tax commission, so. All right, so application is done, feel like we got something done today.
Okay. I would like both Brian and Melissa to talk to you all about some software possibilities that I think are, would be, would be very helpful and needed for this program. One of them is DocuSign, I'll let them explain that, the other one is Therefore.
Do you want me to go first? Sure. All right, at last week's commission meeting, it was kind of, or at the, I don't know if it was commission meeting or, I think it was, it was brought up about using DocuSign to securely sign documents and kinda wondering about that, so I actually contacted them and, cause I went on their website, and they actually have an option where we can create a fillable online form on the DocuSign website where people could go out and apply for the senior tax freeze and attach their documents. It's very secure, they give you an audit trail, they have electronic signatures. DocuSign is like one of the biggest names in the business for securely signing documents. If you've ever done any kind of real estate transaction, you probably had signed, had signed your papers using DocuSign. It is extremely secure. They, what they would do is they would, when somebody fills out the application and attaches the documents, it basically kinda puts it all into a packet, and we can actually have it to where it, at the end of the day, all of the packets that were submitted for that day can electronically come down to the city's, or to the county's server. It's compatible, Brian said that it's compatible with some of the software that we have on, on our servers now. So, then basically, it would just make it easier for people to apply online, and it goes by how many packets, the pricing is by a number of packets, so we were kind of estimating like, it's really a guess, how many people will do it online, but we're kind of estimating two thousand possibly would fill it out online, out of the four or five thousand potentially that might apply for the senior tax freeze. So, the packet for the two thousand is eight thousand four twenty-four, and we can add more, what they call them envelopes, but they're basically the packets of data that come back. We can add more, more in quantities of five hundred if we decide we need to, if we see that we're getting way more than we thought we would get. There's a couple other packets, too. There's a one for three thousand, and there's one for a thousand as well, but I just think it would save our staff a lot of time, it would save people a lot of time having to come up here to fill out the form if they're having questions, that they need help, like finding documentation and things like that.
Just seeing like the other side, how many do we really think is gonna do that, though? Cause if you're a certain age and older, you're not gonna even understand how this process works or want to do this process, to spend eighty-five hundred dollars seems like it's a lot.
Well, I, I feel like they're, they're probably gonna maybe even have their kids to help them do things like that, too, I would think, I don't know.
I agree.
I think we, I think we need an online option, though.
One of the things that I haven't really heard discussed was, I heard about the initial wave, that there's gonna be subsequent waves, too, every, is it every year?
Yes.
Okay, so you'll be at, you'll have renewals, right?
Yes.
But then you also have the additional amount.
Correct.
So, anyway, logistically, when you start running the numbers and stuff like that, what I, how I feel is, is that you have to create an avenue that's very efficient way to handle the amount of, the volume of applications that could possibly come in. So, it's not only handling them, but it's handling them, security. So, so anyway, are you?
Go ahead.
Okay, so, so anyway, so the county already owns this product called Therefore, and so one of the things that was immediately brought up was, we need to securely store all of these documents in a, in a very encrypted, secure fashion. So, how you do that is, is you store that within a repository that does those kinds of things. So, like I said, county already owns that now. What we'll have to do is add some licenses to it to allow for the additional number of users that are gonna be working the system. So, so anyway, when we go through and we look at that, right now, the, the county collector and the county assessor and then the recorder sum, and then the clerk use a product called DevNet. Now, recorder's office doesn't use it as their sole, but you do have access, you don't have access to it, okay, disregard that part, okay. So, so anyway, what, what we do is, we can set up the software, this document management software, to put hooks into DevNet that actually pre-populates those fields where they can search. So, so for instance, we talked to the collector, and he said, well, looking at by parcel number would be a good thing. So, like whenever it browses, it actually, you put in a parcel number or last name, first name, it actually pre-populates the fields that people would be keying in by themselves. So, that's gonna take, save a lot of keystrokes. So, the idea is that we have, you know, sufficient number of people work, helping work with this program, but also letting the software try to do as much as we can. So, once they get that application and then they pull up that, that parcel number or that name, you scan in the required documents, and it forces you to fill those things out that are required. So, anyway, so there's a cost to that, too, of course, and so I brought that up, all right? So, I had our, our vendor work me up some numbers, so, so to, so right now, we have the work group edition, so we need to add five concurrent user licenses, and that would be five thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. We need a capture client, which allows us to do a lot of this automation, and it's nine thousand three hundred and thirty dollars, and then the implementation services, and then the maintenance, so all total, it would be twenty-one thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and four cents to land that, to get it configured. So, so anyway, that's the part that I was, I was tasked with, was to help figure out how we can, you know, hit all those marks, so, so anyway. So anyway.
So let me ask, Therefore is a counterpart to DocuSign?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the two kind of, well, so like for instance, uh, DocuSign would be the online presence that you're, that you're looking for. And then, Therefore would be where you would store everything.
So we would need both?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're roughly thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
To, to do both.
Yeah, was that what, DocuSign?
Yeah, DocuSign is eight, eight thousand four hundred twenty-four for the two thousand envelope package.
See, I don't think we're gonna get that many doing DocuSign. I do maybe, with the county, I do maybe six or seven a year, I will DocuSign. I keep, I, for eight thousand dollars, I would, I would hold off. That's just me, I'm just looking at the cost to implement this.
Well, I'm thinking about the amount of time that, that staff is going to have to hand enter all of those, scan all those documents, and if, you know, people don't have the option to do it online.
It's cheaper than hiring a person.
And I mean, we could go for the, if you don't think we're gonna have that many, we could go for the one thousand option.
Yeah, I don't, I would do one thousand, I don't even think so.
That one's five thousand fifty-four forty.
Can it be increased if we've reached that?
Yes.
What would it bring the Therefore to?
I still think.
Uh, the Therefore is a different, a separate package.
Paying their taxes.
That's not based on how many online?
They want their receipt stored on.
Is it Therefore?
Get their receipt.
I pay mine online, and I get my receipt right away. It's right there.
The Therefore is gonna be used for also the stuff that happens here in the office as well.
Hit a button and do it online and done. So, I, I mean, I'm fine with your idea of doing, starting with a thousand if we wanna.
Yeah.
I, I just think this makes sense to do it, it does seem like a lot right now. But over the next however many years that you're able to implement it, fine tune it, I think it's just gonna be worth it.
I think that whenever it comes to the renewals, it's gonna be really fast. Just because you already have the, the packets and everything stored, you just, I don't know what that renewal process is gonna look like, but, I mean.
Need a new one.
And we may, and we may not even need to, I mean, depending on what DevNet does, we may not need as much of this for the renewals after, after the initial, um, application period, if DevNet creates their own system in, in DevNet for next year, which they've been talking about.
And what would you need for following years?
Just resources.
So this is just for the year.
Couldn't DevNet just scan your real ID and attach it, and you're done for the renewal? Everything's on here, photo ID, signature, birthday, address.
Well, I guess first we have to determine what the renewal process is gonna be, which we haven't done yet.
The plus about the DocuSign is, it's very, a very secure system, there's an audit trail. It's just very impressive how secure it is.
Yeah.
And I emailed it to everybody.
Is it used?
Yeah.
I'd start a thousand and just see. I don't think we're gonna have two thousand.
I'll have to get him to send.
Seniors doing that.
I'll have to get them to send another.
So how do you do DocuSign, Sam, cause you do DocuSign. How do you do DocuSign, you do DocuSign?
Sure does.
I know, they're gonna have their kids coming in.
Yeah.
Well, we can either drive into town and go and have to go to the index and stand in line.
And if people are gonna wanna come in here, they're gonna wanna.
Just have those people, yes. I don't disagree with that, you're gonna still have the people.
And there are sixty-two-year-olds that are computer savvy, I mean, that's gonna be me next year, I'll be applying probably next year, so, I mean.
I would tell you, there are seventy-four-year-olds who use DocuSign. And Brian will tell you, I'm a technology dinosaur, but I can whip right through that DocuSign. And the amount of documents that my office is required to sign on a daily basis saves an incredible amount of time.
And they'll be, they can do this from their phone even if they want to, I mean, they, there's.
I can see the second year, for renewals, I can see them maybe doing more online, once they're.
And the only issue with scanning directly into DevNet is that everyone's gonna have to come to our office.
Thank you, Larry.
Our window to do that, and again, we're.
They're paying taxes there. You can't just scan the license at, when they pay taxes, if they wanna sign.
You have to go into a whole different system.
An iPad?
In DevNet to do, to scan a license to the account than you do then taking a payment at the window.
I know it seems complicated, when we switch systems, everything is upfront now. They come in, we scan the documents right away, we attach the image to the index. We weren't used to that either, but once we got the hang of it and worked through small glitches, it actually is faster.
I'm just, I'm just telling you, our windows are set up to take payments, and the payment functions are different than.
Sure.
Scanning the document to the customer's account.
Yes. And sometimes there are several documents, you know, on the account. So you're gonna have to go through each one to see which ones, you know, if there was this designated area.
You guys also have, when you start collecting taxes, the lines, and I don't know if you slow that process down anywhere than it is already, right?
Yeah, that's, my, my fear is, again, as I've said before, is we have customers coming in every day, not all day long, but during the busy season all day long. And not being able to take their payment because somebody else is doing, doing the senior citizen's tax information. And for the most part, you know, I've got three people, or two people working the windows, and one part-time for half a day. And it, you know, they can stay pretty damn busy.
Plus, we stopped notarizing during tax season, we don't even do that.
Well, we're not gonna have to notarize anyone.
Well, I'm, I'm saying, you know, just commoners that come in.
I would envision during the busy tax time, we're not taking them down there, then they may have to come up here, or to the clerk's office. And during election time, we wouldn't have them going to the clerk's office. I think there'd be different places that we can do that, it wouldn't have to be when you're all busy down there, telling them we're on you.
How many windows do you have? I got a part-timer that I would loan you temporarily for a certain period of time.
We have five windows.
So, and do you have somebody at each one of those during your busy time?
During our busy time, yes.
So you wouldn't have room for?
No, no, I, I wouldn't allow it.
Well, I mean, why wouldn't you just go across the hall?
I'm fine with that, I don't wanna do it anyway, I'm just trying to help.
Show me an iPad or something.
During tax season, I would not.
Yeah, cause it's so busy.
An iPad to do what?
Whatever they're coming in to do, you're gonna, you can enter it on that, or you can set something up across the hall, or upstairs.
Well, you can have twenty people in that hall, they get it.
And that's kinda what we're trying to.
They'll get, they'll get over.
What we're trying to do is.
They move them through that line pretty quick down there, collecting the tax money, so.
But then, oh, go ahead, Brian.
Right now, what we've got, at least what I've been told, is, is that it would be a good idea to get six, basically laptops set up with scanners and things like that, so we can process the people who come in, their applications in a quick manner. I'm sitting there trying to figure out, you know, those, those are very specific setups. So like, for instance, you know, this, these capture client licenses, what we'll do is, is Larry has provided like, uh, at least six scanners, got more, but at least six scanners that we already currently own, that we're gonna set up against a workstation with a particular configuration. Now, I can move, I mean, you know, I know we're just kinda making a cake on the fly, but we can move those work, those laptops to specific departments, but I can't take an existing workstation and configure it, you know, like, right now it's configured to do recording stuff, or collector stuff, without, without it being pretty cumbersome. So that's why, um, we basically, we already own the laptops, we already own the scanners. So that's why Diane Honslock has been going through getting everything ready for whenever we go live with the application process. So, I can put them into the network anywhere, but I just need to know where.
Cause if we do it in here, we're gonna be having to, you know, take them in and put, you know, put it up.
Which Brent Fisher's really looking forward to that. Tear them up, take them down.
Well, this room could be, if it's not being used every day, this room could be locked up, except for Tuesdays, when you have your regularly scheduled commission meetings.
Maybe there's some other training sessions and things like that in here, but, um, things like that.
Gretchen would be glad to come up and help.
Well, I think, I think a lot of times it could be used. I mean, everyone, during election time, you know, they have, they have voting in here too, and it, it.
There isn't another.
Boy, they really do get lined up.
There isn't another election this year.
No, no, so, I'm saying, so.
That we know of. I, I envision this.
This could probably be used here. Other times, you know, some things are scheduled, so you almost have to check with Melody to see who, you know, if somebody has this room reserved for, like parks, they meet up, the parks doing, are they lunch, are they giving up here at lunch?
Well, I have my bid openings here, or we have like a pre-bid meeting here tomorrow morning, so it's used randomly, but I think as long as you're checked with Melody and get on the calendar.
So, Melody's kinda the keeper of the calendar.
And you don't wanna send them over to sheriffs, right? You don't wanna send them across the street where you could set up a corner and leave it?
Well, I don't know that we could do that over there either.
It locks too.
Well, I know, but they use their training room all the time.
But it's a bigger area.
But it has to be that configuration, you know?
So I'm not understanding why we have to have sixty-two different places, if we can have downstairs, okay, I'm gonna collect the taxes, or I'll move somewhere else.
I'm just, I'm just giving you a chance.
We can't do it at our windows, I don't think they can do it at their windows. I don't, I don't think Chris can do it at his windows. I mean, we have enough foot traffic.
When you say your window, you mean that's your window today? You mean you got lines down there today, so you couldn't take them today if we started the application today?
I'm saying.
If we had one, one window, one actual window, or you talking about the windows on a computer?
Well, how much is one person gonna get done?
I don't know, we haven't done this, so I guess.
That's why I think.
Body fill out one's application, we reserve by property, pretend you're sixty-two, we're gonna get lined and processing.
The only thing I'm gonna tell you, Jeff, is I have yet to talk to a collector that has, hasn't said this is mass confusion when you open this program up.
And we need to be organized.
I don't disagree with that, but it's just, it's gonna be what it is, there's gonna stand in line for a little while.
I think ideally, the place to do it, whether it's the sheriff's training room or up here, we pick the times and days that we're gonna be open for doing that.
All year long?
No.
Yes.
Well, I would shorten that, you said until June of twenty-six.
And I'm not opposed to doing that, Larry, if we're gonna do it, we'll say, hey, you know, here's when you can apply, Monday, Friday, Friday.
I think our first, I think our first three months are gonna be the busy months.
So, okay, so let's have organized chaos.
And then, then we figure out where we're gonna go from there.
It's not gonna be forty hours a week that you can apply, or whatever. It's gonna be.
New to four.
If we wanna do five days a week for two hours, or pick the days?
I say drive, drive them to the website. I mean, if they, I mean, if you have like multiple places that they can apply, it will help.
I'm good with that.
Are, and are they gonna be able to mail in, like snail mail in their applications? I've seen, most of the ones that I've seen allow that, they have their mailing address on there. That was the other question that I think we talked about.
Yeah, I think we'll take them any way we can get them.
And we can do signage too, it's kinda like when, if, you know, when people are voting, you've got the sign downstairs that says voting. So you can, we could have signs.
Nobody would read.
People don't read that.
And we know upstairs, we send them to the assessor.
When it's right there, they don't worry.
I've hit my nose on so many doors that say, cool. Yeah, we can put signs up, and then they'll still be up at the window, standing in line for a while, I'm here for this, oh, we didn't read the sign here, go upstairs, and it'll be bad. So we'll send them to Sam's office.
Oh, you're, you're gonna be the ones that take care of all the applications?
I will, I'll care. I'll review them all. So if we do that certain days of the week, then is what I hear being proposed.
I'd say.
I'm, I'm good with that, I don't know how everybody else feels, but.
Yeah, I like it, in certain times here.
In certain times, we just need to work out what that schedule's gonna be.
And you're gonna direct them to the website, we try to do that too, you'll still get a lot of people in-house?
We're just, I, I don't think any of us are set up for people to stand at our counters and, and fill this stuff out.
Well, yeah, we could even say like, we're here, it's Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, cause we have commission on Tuesday. And if Melody knows that Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from eight AM to, I don't think Monday's all there.
We know we have this longer period now.
Then she could schedule other meetings, like your bid openings for Tuesday afternoon, Thursdays. It would still give some flexibility.
Will they still have to disassemble IT, or will they still need to disassemble and put back up every Monday, Wednesday, Friday? That kinda cuts a lot of time in for them.
Brian?
I don't think the commissioner's very concerned about that.
But, no, I'm right.
Move our own damn offices. Would've set up my office, and let's get a line out through the door, down the stairs, and circle them around. We'll set a card table up, and.
We're, we're, we're prepared to set up and tear down as often as you need.
How, how long does that take?
Uh, well.
Two days.
It, it literally will take probably less than thirty minutes to get everything set up, door back in again, so. Because we're gonna have it all staged, so what I.
I think it'd be easier to just say, this is gonna be where you're gonna come, if we can work the schedule out. Because that way we're not sending them downstairs, and we're sending them upstairs.
We only do that during tax season.
Yeah.
Go to the assessor, they look it up, they print it at the collector, they come to our place for a deed, so they're running all over.
They come to our place, we ask where to pay their taxes first.
Yeah.
And that's. Probably put our advertising on online, that come up to the commission to, to fill out the application.
Okay, so how many days a week?
Monday, two, Monday, Wednesday.
You could always do it three days, then if you don't get as much traffic, then just narrow it down to two as the time goes on.
Seven AM to eight AM, I'll do it every morning.
Wow. We'll send coffee. Do you like three days in a row, Larry?
Senior systems usually up.
Do you like three days, like Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, or do you rather have Monday, Wednesday, Friday?
Well, can they, your tax free.
I don't really care, I don't prefer Fridays.
I was thinking if you did Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, then they don't have to tear it down Tuesday.
Just, don't you do a lot of your bid openings on Thursdays?
See how often this room is used, if we can. Any particular days you do your bid openings, or it's just?
Usually on Thursdays, and then I know Lily does, um, new employee orientations too randomly. But she'd just have to check the calendar to see.
You'll probably need that service once this starts, new employee orientation. Just kidding.
So then we have to figure out how we're gonna staff, and so we have to come up here.
What do you, you guys are already gonna work that?
Yeah, our, most all the offices have volunteered to help out, so.
I would say we, we use this, this room, and just, you know, again, as long as it's open.
We can get air conditioning there.
As long as it's open for other things that, that you have. As long as it's open for other things that, that you have to do, that Debbie has to do, Lily has to do. It's, this is still, you've got the door right there that can.
And we have a much longer period now. We thought we had to have this done by June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five. We got a whole nother year, so, you know.
But there's actually one down here.
Some of it, not all of it.
Brian, can you get into Melody's calendar on my calendar?
Nope. And add that Melody's password?
Ooh, Melody's password. Write it down. Write it down, because we're all being recorded. All of it is?
All the meetings that I know about.
Hey, if they don't get it scheduled with you, you're the boss there, so, tell them. Tell them they don't get okay with Melody.
So when we talked to DocuSign, we were still on that, kind of, we were in a hurry to get this done and get it implemented. So the, this quote is good till three-thirty-one, so if we approve doing the one thousand instead of the two thousand, I don't have a contract for the one thousand, but if I could get, if we can approve it, can I bring the contract to you without being in a meeting?
Is that an annual amount?
Huh?
Is that an annual amount?
Yeah.
About five thousand?
Yeah.
What if we just wanna do five hundred?
Uh.
What, what is like the starting?
I have no idea. The starting number was one thousand.
I think there's.
I mean, five hundred.
There's at least a thousand competent people in the county.
I think so, I think.
Really?
Excluding the commission.
We actually. Okay, so. We have a call with him tomorrow, so I can actually email him and get him to send a new contract for a thousand envelopes instead of two thousand.
So if you can get pricing for us and get a contract doing, you need.
Well, I've got the price for it, that five thousand fifty-four, forty. It's in that packet that I emailed, that I emailed all of you.
Save yourself. Perfect, if I remember.
And does the.
Is there a way we can track how many applicants actually use it?
Well, yeah.
Probably?
I want my money. I think we did.
That'll be the easy part.
Yeah.
And the therefore, does, does that?
I need a motion to.
I'm ready for that.
That doesn't require a new contract, because we already have that, or?
That's right.
Okay. Jeff so moves that you.
Hey, this is, this is G.I.S. coming. Hey, uh, so you need a motion to approve.
To approve.
DocuSign solution, approving DocuSign solutions.
For one thousand envelopes.
One thousand envelopes.
Yeah, and I will get you a new contract. Jill had approved this one, or told me this was good with her already, so I just need to get one for the one thousand envelopes for you guys to sign.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the DocuSign solutions for the one thousand quantity option of envelopes.
I second. Any other questions? All in favor?
All right. Okay, so that'll get us started on that. And I was trying to look at, oh, you probably need this one. I was trying to look up the calendar, agenda calendar, but I can't just get to that.
I need the, I also need one.
I need the calendar. I'm gonna get to agenda.
Mine's probably easier.
Should I? I, I just wanna say.
Yes, ma'am.
I told her, I already asked.
Yeah, but if we're doing this online, so, and if this is gonna say, as recorded in recorder of deeds office, the people are gonna think they need to come in and get their deed anyway, so they're gonna be coming in.
Or calling.
And that's probably gonna deter them from filling it out online.
We think.
Wouldn't you think? So can't we, I mean, can it just say property owner or something there?
I think on the, on the main page of the tax-free website, we need to have um, kind of a list of all the documents they're gonna need and where they can get it, yeah.
And they don't need, oh, so do they need the deed or not?
I don't know, do they need the deed?
It's not required down here, was removed.
I don't think it's on there.
But I think they're gonna think they need it, because upfront, when they first fill out name and everything, it shows that, I, I think they think they're gonna need it right here.
Well, it says as recorded in the recorder's office.
Oh.
I think it's just gonna confuse them.
Yeah, I think maybe, maybe that shouldn't be there then.
I think the wording needs to be changed, because in some cases they won't have adequate proof and you'll want them to get their deed.
I mean, to me, it would be.
So maybe it shouldn't say as recorded in recorder's of deed office, but it.
Property owner, owners, S and parentheses names, or name, names?
So you're just not gonna let me win this one?
I don't, I've been trying, but.
I'm defying.
I don't know.
From tax bill?
Where you want.
Would that be from the tax bill?
The first.
Sometimes that's.
It's at the very top.
In Cara, right?
That, that works unless it is a P.O.A. or somebody like that. Their name isn't on the tax bill.
Does it say in Cara or some, oh, okay. It doesn't say that, it doesn't say the owner's name and like in Cara then on the tax bill.
Okay, so which line are you talking about?
That's my question.
At the top where we have owner of record as recorded in the recorder of deeds office. And I can see why we don't wanna create the impression that everybody's gotta get their deed, but some may have to, so we just need to change that wording.
I just gotta go look to see how it is online. So where do I go on my, from G.I.S. and on collector information link?
Yep.
Maybe it'll just say additional, additional documentation, documentation may be required from the recorder of deeds office.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm.
How's that work?
I'm filling this out.
I think they'll be calling us, but I like it better.
If you're happy, I'm happy.
I'm never happy, because I would do this and leave it off, so, but I understand you're needing something.
If you're never happy, then I don't give a damn if you're happy, so.
Just trying to talk, he's getting frustrated. I gotta keep him.
Happy?
Fill this out at home. I go onto the G.I.S. site. This shouldn't be that hard to figure out. So where's, then do, I mean, I pull it up, I hit my property.
You should be able to hit that collector's link, yeah, and, yeah.
So it's gonna be different on the bill?
No, the owner's name and address should be the, the one from the deed, and then, I don't know.
Surprisingly, it says Jeffrey J. Elstrudt. So that's just what I write down on owner of record?
That's what.
I don't have, I mean, is there gonna say something?
If you were of age.
And your parcel ID.
When's the last time you were told you weren't of age?
Which is on your tax bill, your receipt has that.
Okay, so I can go to print my tax bill.
Yep.
And it'll give me a parcel number and everything on there, correct?
Mm-hmm, and that's all you need.
Okay, that was simple.
Right.
For you, that's simple.
Uh, no, this is, it is not that simple for me.
Oh.
I, I really am. I'm technologically challenged too, so that's why I'm asking, because if we all sit here and try to fill this out, and seven out of ten of us have problems with it, we need to change it. But, or we're all gonna be up here in line, and that's gonna tell us, we need to have more time to apply here and answer questions. Yeah, there's a legal description, there's a name.
And I've got the link to Minmo on the, um, app, on the website too.
So then what was confusing about recorded in, as recorded in recorder of deeds office, that you think they're gonna have to come and see what's.
Yes, she thinks they're gonna be, they're gonna think they have to go get a copy of their deed.
Yeah.
I can see that.
Yeah.
So we're gonna change it, additional documentation may be required as recorded in the recorder of deeds office.
That's still basically saying the same.
I thought you liked that.
Why don't you just put can be found on real estate property tax bill and/or receipt as well, because it's there, right?
Right.
Not necessarily on all cases. That's the problem.
So you're gonna have though, you're gonna have, that's the problem, because you are gonna have those problems, and somebody could buy property in June and it's not even over to the assessor, you don't even have a tax bill yet. So there are gonna be, that's your basket of problems, and then we'll have to do more work on those.
That would be your anomalies that come in.
Pardon me?
Right.
That would be your outliers, the weird ones, which.
Yes.
Problem looking.
Yep.
The problem children, the larys.
He said, go down, sit in the.
So.
Then we can look those up.
I think you answered my question, and I think that is possible.
We'll work on that wording.
I think, I think.
I think that's, yeah.
But the vast majority.
So what if we give them a copy of their real estate bill and/or receipt and say, you know, this is your parcel number, this is your owner of record.
Yes.
A picture, yeah.
Sample.
We could do that.
Perfect. That's perfect.
We could have all the lists of different things, and it could have a link that says, show me or something, and they could click on it and it would pull up a picture of a sample tax bill or whatever and circle that thing, so.
Okay.
We can do that.
Yeah, that's perfect. That's a great idea.
Fine, only took me to a little. Okay, so what else we got?
I need a motion.
For the therefore.
On, on this, will this hold all of our applications?
It will.
This will be, this will be, everybody who applies will be on this.
Yes.
And, and that's, yeah. Hate to spend the money, but it's.
So I need a motion to approve the purchase of additional therefore licenses and services at a cost of twenty-one thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and four cents.
Oh.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Uh.
Aye. It's a big one, Elizabeth, I'm coming.
You're not even gonna get to apply, just ready. Okay, so we got that, so you're taking care of, you're taking care of. We've got some application stuff taken care of. So we need to practice filling these out, and how we're gonna be reviewed for the process then at some point?
Do you mean online?
Probably all the.
Everyone, I think so too. Yeah, we should run through something.
How soon will we be able to have a webpage up? I guess is, would be one of my questions.
Um, well, the website is up, it's just needs a lot of details that we didn't have originally, but it won't take very long to put it together once I have a idea of what we want, which I think I've got more of an idea now.
Is it active now? Anything?
Our county website, yeah. The DocuSign thing, of course, won't be.
No, I mean anything on the senior tax free, is any of that out there on our county website?
We've got the, it's not live now.
Okay.
I haven't published, there's a draft there. I've got the FAQs on there, I've got the homepage, I've got a little link to Minmo, and also to your collector tax um, search on there. Um, no, I just need to go through and like fine-tune the homepage.
And Brian, your therefore stuff, that, that doesn't, that won't take long to get up and running?
No, we've already got a, uh, basically a working system, but we just have to go through and add the licensing, and then also go with their, go through with their services people to make sure it goes through and does that capture, like what we were talking about, so I, I can have done very quickly.
And then we need to talk to our staff and Melody and have her mark out the days that, you know, this is gonna be in use so that we have that on our calendar all the time.
Get to the calendar, the agenda calendar.
And hopefully that'll, like, enough time just to do.
She have to share that with me?
Our functions.
I think I have a, a bid openings up until mid-April right now on Thursdays.
On Thursdays.
But if you do it in the morning or just, I usually start all of them at three o'clock. But once, once this stuff gets rolling, I can always work around and pick a different date. That's not a big deal. It's just the stuff that's scheduled now, I don't like moving them.
It might be good to like do some days in the morning and some days in the afternoon to give people options.
Right, they have different work shifts, they can't get, and then the public works does bids also.
You know, those are Friday mornings usually, at nine.
There's not really that many days that it's busy.
No, but we just need to make sure that it's on that, the calendar, so they don't schedule public works in here when we're having people fill out applications. My office is small, so it's hard to.
I'm assuming if we were in here three days in a row, they wouldn't have to necessarily, definitely open a half a day. They wouldn't have to tear it down.
God, we should be able to leave it set up.
That would probably.
So we can arrange our time, as long as we know we're gonna do it here, then we just need to get it on the calendar early enough so that we don't book it with something else.
Well, from that, Judy's suggestion, it looks like it would be Wednesday, Thursdays, and Fridays would be the three days in a row that would prevent from having to tear down, you know, they could set up on Wednesday morning and tear down Friday afternoon.
So your bid openings just need to be.
I can change them. I just have one scheduled out right now, like mid-April, but I can change.
We probably won't start before that.
Yeah, so if I know Thursdays will be taken, then I'll just rearrange them around what you guys have going on.
I would just plan on that going forward after the next one you have, that they, that don't do them on Wednesday, Thursdays, or Fridays.
And what hours all day?
Well, I.
Go ahead.
No.
No, I was just gonna say, I, I'm not sure if anybody can afford to do it all day long.
Right.
Staff-wise, that would be difficult, and I don't know, I'd wanna start right at eight o'clock.
Do ten to three?
I like that, ten to three.
Yeah.
Any other ideas?
We can always, we can always tweak it, send it out and see what everybody says.
Gotta start somewhere, so, ten to three, two, Thursday, Fridays.
Will your office be shorters staffed over a lunch hour, though, if you have all your employees taking lunches? And if you're gonna be having.
Don't get lunches.
That's when a clerk's office comes over and asks.
Well, and I never go to lunch at noon, so I volunteer to do some, I can always do the noon to one segment.
Oh, well, unless I need it in your own. Sorry.
And we.
So ten, fifteen, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Hard time to come in and.
Ten to three.
If Gina wants to come in and do some of this, I'll ask.
Yeah, that's what I.
Get a grid and start signing up for lots of time now in advance.
And that's to work the public, not to review.
That's to work the public.
Okay. Yeah, so could your, some of your office come help? They might be able to. Okay.
So are you talking about.
And let me ask, what were you waiting on though?
One for a year?
Constituting a turning point?
No, no, no.
Oh, I was, I was, on, on whether we needed a witness line, I, I.
We, we wouldn't be able to do it from September on, because of what we have to do for taxis.
Well, I, I don't, I think.
I'm, I'm hoping we get a.
Yeah.
So.
It's kind of a moot point.
She was suggesting to sign, do a sign-up grid. That's a good idea, I think, too. So then you know who's supposed to be working or whatever, whoever is posted.
Or work department, yeah. If you don't wanna be up here every day, you can work up here one day or something.
And so like a calendar should.
Yeah.
We could create, you create a calendar.
Thanks for volunteering to do that.
Actually, I'm trying to say something really neat. I am Haslog.
Thanks, Brian. Luckily, Brian hired all these people that have to do this.
That's exactly right. I learned from them.
As much or anything.
Hey.
You saw where I wanted him to. You saw where I wanted him to video when he said he was gonna be working.
Yeah, my nickname for him is O.G.O., which is so great. You know, my nickname for him is O G O, which is so great, so you don't, don't pick on Brian.
It's the end department.
Yeah, don't pick on Brian, come here.
You're just missing in the E R at the end of that.
Okay, so this is digressing into a Brian passion session.
On the frequently asked questions, I don't see anything on there about trusts. Is there any way to put anything on there without making it more confusing on trusts?
I thought there was something that mentioned trust.
Let's see if you put the name or, or representative, your trust officer could actually do it, you know, put the same on the under-division trust by...
But the problem is that somebody's got a trust, but they don't live there and they're the ones actually eligible.
Maybe they don't have a...
Rules to it.
Oh, there it is.
Why do you have to be great for honest? There are a lot of trusts out there.
Yeah, I don't see it.
I don't either.
I don't either. Question number is it under? Are, are you saying we should add that?
We need to add some.
No, I was just looking for, because I know that, that was the question I brought up somewhere along the line and so I was trying to see if that was home there.
Yeah, what if your property's...
Well, it would be 11C is where it would need to be added. Proof of ownership. Again, in that one, we say tax person being known as, say tax additional documents may be requested by the collector. We just need to add some wording in there about trust.
They probably would wanna come see us if they don't have that easy available. Because we don't record the trust, but we record documentation stating that it's in a trust. But you're needing to know it's their primary residence. So I guess if they have several pieces in a trust, you need the piece that they're applying for.
Yes.
The homestead.
Yeah, 'cause I was wondering.
Yeah.
Was there a question about if part of their homestead is used for commercial purposes? I know I've seen some of the people's websites, counties' websites that have that kind of stipulation about part of it being, I mean, I know...
You all have them split up already, don't you?
We should, yeah.
So we would just cherry pick that portion that is the homestead.
I've seen some counties just say, if part of it's a commercial, then you're not qualified or something, but we're not doing that.
Yeah, it's like if it's commercial, then some of it would have to be residential if you're living there too, somehow, some way.
Yeah.
So if it's divided out, then we should be able to do that. All right, so when do we wanna practice filling these out and testing the system?
I think we gotta get it all put together and then have to let you know.
Well, I mean, we've got applications, so...
We're gonna fill some out in our office just so we can get trained on DevNet and what their process is.
When are you doing that?
I'll let you know when we get back down to the office.
So the people that are gonna be up here working, do they need training on DevNet or they just do an application?
They're just doing applications.
Okay.
At least that's the plan right now. I haven't seen what all's involved in it yet, so.
Okay.
But as far as I know, it's just on our, on the collector's billing and collection side, so. Now, we did, Brian did check with them, we can put the tax inquiry side on every one of these laptops that we're gonna have up here uh, if help is needed in looking up parcel numbers or anything like that.
G I S too, yeah, okay.
We'll, we'll put shortcuts to whatever you think you might need to help the process.
Well, and on the website too, can we do it where like you have a, a save and exit feature? So like if you get stumped at, at the third step, it saves everything you've done already and then you get back in?
I think DocuSign does that, I think DocuSign said that they have that already built into that form.
So that way we can say, okay, your next step is, and you need A, B, and C, and then you come back and we'll finish this, where we can log back in.
That's a great idea, 'cause I can't tell you the number of times I've had to start all over again.
And that'll just add to the frustration, if we could get them back into it where they were.
But, but you, you guys won't be doing the online thing here with people here, will you?
I mean, they could, I mean...
I thought that's why you were gonna have laptops set up up here.
No, no, so, so the, the process is, is that the person comes in and, you know, this is for the public that's gonna actually show up here and then, um, they're gonna go through and you can manually add it to the document management system. You know, go through and help them fill it out and stuff like that, or, you know, I would think it would be a long way around going through the website and back down, or you could just do it directly here. So I mean, there's no wrong in it, you know what I mean? I mean, you, how you wanna do it, so.
I mean, that person would have to actually use the computer to electronically sign that document, though they can't, like, you can't, you can't click sign and put the sign, the electronic signature in there.
So if we fill out, yeah, if, so we fill out a handwritten application here.
And you sign it.
And then we scan it in.
Yeah.
And it scans, that scans into DocuSign, I mean into, into therefore?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just as if we imported a online completed application.
That's right.
Yeah, that's how that would work.
And it has the capability of recognizing parcel numbers and...
Well, the idea is that it's gonna pre-populate those parcel numbers based upon the lookout.
Okay.
Yeah, right? So like we did that.
You're like, okay.
Yeah, we did it, and we had a demo of it and, uh, as long as we get the hooks built into DevNet, which I don't think will be a problem, then it'll, it'll basically say, if that person knows their parcel number or brings the documentation, you type in that parcel number, it pre-populates the fields that are mandatory.
Name and address and...
Yes, and it, and it, it populates them based upon what's in DevNet, which is ideal.
Here we're gonna have like a box or a container or something for their paper application, I mean, we're, we're so used to, after we vote, feeding it into the machine.
You mean a place to put, actually, are you gonna store the physical documents? I mean, that's a good question.
Well, we need to keep, I mean, we're gonna, you're gonna have, so we need to do something with them and it might be...
I think we have file cabinet space in our office, don't we, some of those lateral file cabinets?
Why don't you just give them their paper copy back if you scanned it? I mean, do you have to get it off?
Well, that's what I was thinking, why don't you scan it? If you've scanned it, then why do you need to keep the paper copy?
That's what I said.
Man, this is the nineties, let's go paperless.
Well, I'm just, I'm just figuring, people are gonna, you know, it's, we don't wanna just say, oh yeah, it's here, you're done. They're gonna say, what are you gonna do with that?
We're not gonna let people like you come in and bully us, Sam. I mean, if you're...
I'm gonna file it back out, I qualify. So just to be clear, this room is gonna be used to meet the public and to help them manually fill out the form?
Yes.
Okay.
So like can, who, can they just go to, we don't hand it in if it's already filled out?
Yep.
Is that gonna be here too then, or...
There's a drop box, gonna be a drop box downstairs and then I assume they can go...
They can drop in our front slot on the front of the building.
You might need one up here too, I'd put at least two places.
We probably can get, uh, this time of year, we can probably borrow Chris, we can use one of your assessment boxes. People can drop them in that.
Then have three, 'cause if they're already up here, yeah, we might as well drop it off.
I'm thinking if they're already up here, just gonna scan it, but if we're not open and it comes out Monday or something, then I can at least leave it here.
Well, the assessor's office puts the assessment drop box out in our hallway, uh, outside Judy's back door uh, during November, December and January and February. Uh, and it's got a lock on it, so people drop their stuff in there and it's semi-secure.
Is it a full width slot or is it small for the envelope?
It's an envelope slot.
That's big enough for full documents with?
Well, we probably need to note, it needs to be in an envelope. I would assume people would do that, but...
And we can, hey, we can have some, we can have some, we can have some envelopes right up to say teen, senior tax freeze up here by it, so they can fold their thing up, put it in that envelope and stick it in the box.
Envelope with...
Just spending our money right and left.
Oh, we're just gonna get, I want someone to get a marker.
Just for...
I'm gonna save this one.
I'll buy the envelopes.
Devil's stamp. I know.
Okay, what else we need to do today? Same time, same place next Tuesday, till we get this done?
Sure.
Do we want to fill out some applications that we have and bring them in and see if somebody runs into problems? Or if we can look it up and see if there are problems or anything, or are we wanting to run any kind of test?
Excuse me.
Not yet, maybe not yet.
Well, let's play that by ear and see how far along they get on them.
I doubt that I have it done by next Tuesday.
Brian?
I mean, I know you like...
I know you like...
Not an American.
I know you like rumples, could mean straw, maybe gold out of straw, but...
Just wanna be solid.
You look like you could use to miss a couple meals, so.
Oh, man, that was...
I'm gonna make a motion to, Darren.
You have... Poor Brian.
Gosh, thank you all, everybody, if we got anything else, let's plan on Tuesday, whatever we can. If it only takes 10 minutes and that's all we got that we can finalize, whatever, then let's keep it rolling, does that work?
Two o'clock.
Is it two o'clock this time and place, are they more good?
Okay.
Okay?
I make a motion. We stand recess until four.
Second.
I hope he doesn't need your help.
Right.